Welcome to this meeting. And so, good morning. Firstly, are there any quality rules of absence? Chair, we've had a question from Council of London. Thank you. And any declarations of interest? No. And minutes ago, I was like, um, I'm sure for me, a group of members have seen the minutes of the meeting carried on. Talking about that.
Yes.
So first of all, three items today. Great Moray Plan Adoption, which is nice to have strongly rhyming. I think, whereas I make it from you as much on the line, I have, I think, that, um, something has been submitted that quite frequently over the years. Um, I think most recently, I think Pacific Year, we did the, uh, submission, didn't we? Um, so it's nice to hopefully bring this to conclusion. So my hand, would you?
Yes, thank you. Um, I think, I think most of you know, if there's, is anyone else? I'm, I'm, I'm managing a great, a very simple plan to see if I'm actually able to receive my patch. I don't know, it should be in Scotland for seven years and then I'll all go back. So you will see more in the future. Okay, so the recommendation for the report is on page nine of your, your paper. It's recommended, uh, to Norwich City Council, the Cabinet and the borough council. It is recommended to note the inspector's report, the man ex-convict, who just received the inspector's report. This is the inspector's report, which has found our plan, it's been seven years of working on. It's found as sound. So it's now possibly for free access to doctors. But to do so, we must include the required main modifications from the inspectors.
Is proposed to be considered. That's my presentation finished.
So, Castle Love at County Council.
Well, not really a question, it's just to say congratulations. To be only the second in the country is quite something. I didn't realise that they were, you know, more as the only council sort of in the race to be first. You say leadership, but they are.
So, to be fair, it's the second joint local plan. So, our local plans weigh about a second, but it's the second joint.
It is the joint that's so important for us because of that position. It sounds more than broadly for any time we can do it and it all makes wonderful sense. So, I'm sure you'll send me this hard work, we'll all benefit from it. And especially planning committees, where we have that fine here supply than other important plans. Thank you to you and your team for bringing this to this position.
Exactly. Castle Cameron?
Thank you. So, I was in a very bad place before. I have a question really about the formal housing. The introduction on page seventeen, is it page thirty five? Of the overall report. So, I just wonder, is it page?
Seventeen.
Oh, yeah, page, yeah, page seventeen. The main document.
Does it have a paragraph number?
Yeah, so it has page thirty five, it's page seventeen, the particular form of and it's at the top, thirty five. I just wondered if you might be able to explain all the constraints around this for achieving some formal housing. I know that different local authorities have different views and I just wonder how we come to the figure that we call and how that might differ from other areas.
So, it's a key part of your examination, it's identifying what's appropriate for the housing requirements in your area. So, we had a study done with consultants that looked at house prices in our area, sales price at means, very, very complex analysis was done. And that identified that thirty three percent is appropriate for our area overall. So, that's, at average, I'd say nationally, some parts where, some parts of the country where the prices are higher, that's a lot, so they will have high percentages up in our value in their development. So, that's all taken account of. And then, the higher costs, as we mentioned, the higher cost of high density development in city centres identified that twenty eight percent is appropriate. And there was considerable discussion of that at the examination. And the inspectors concluded that was appropriate amount.
Castle, a few minutes.
Thank you. I also have to say that I think you've got this all the hard work that's gone into this. And I have a question. So, the document emphasises that they have the want to move to a sports car when it comes around, but then there's also that airport expansion that is in there. So, I'm just wondering to what extent these two are compatible or you could answer it. But then I want to, but actually no, that course correction, that's not possible going forward. And that's in the system now, that it's going to actually travel over. Whether this, whether course correction are possible and whether this can exist in the system.
Corrections, of course.
Yeah. Course correction, yeah, you might even go around with the airport, for example, and bring out and navigate through the sports car.
Thank you. So, the first couple of things that focuses on our some of our industries are really very, really, very good for the economy. So, for example, Hethel, that's a known track, Hethel Engineers, there's some really good research going on there about offshore development and maybe offshore sort of green development and other forms of development are really progressive as best as possible. Life Sciences and Norwich Research are digitally created in Norwich. So, they are four points of concern for me. In terms of changes in direction in the future, that would have to be through the next plan. So, this establishes our direction of travel for the next few years. Now, there will be another plan for twenty thirty eight. It says twenty eight, it's twenty thirty eight. But we're probably, not definitely, but we'll start with a new plan within a year or so. It depends partly on what the government says. The government is looking at, I mentioned earlier, talking about new plans taking three years to produce, we just don't know exactly what the hell that's going to take us. So, we have a way of starting a new plan. But yes, there will be another plan by councilway, but within the next few years. And I think, I get the impression that there is still, the community's still working together in the future, it's going to continue to work in the third thirty six.
Okay. Any other questions once? Castle Cameron?
I'm going to read it, thanks. It's a hefty, hefty old document, doesn't make a sweet night. So, I guess, I mean, there's, you know, there was just a few things. So, it was, for instance, it refers to you, you know, which is fantastic, our sustainability being really embedded in this document. But what, I couldn't, I had to find what the criteria, what we mean by sustainability. And in a similar vein, I guess, is, we talked about supporting nature recovery. And then I couldn't find much else on that, on that vein of thought. And so, and I guess, just the context. And that's where, you know, the, one of the main contributions is our ambition, totally is concrete. And so, all these houses are going to be built in a conventional fashion, which I get the impression they are, how sustainable is that?
So, in terms of nature recovery, especially, this is part of a big application of different workers' scale, natural recovery strategies. So, the county has a responsibility for producing that natural recovery strategy, and what is ongoing on that. What we do through developments, through this plan, we will ensure there's onsite green infrastructure on every development as much as possible, or offsite improvements to existing green infrastructure and revision of new infrastructure. And that has happened over recent years as well, for example, improvements to the air, I think that's a script behind me doing. So, that's the main things we do in terms of green infrastructure. In terms of concrete and so on, I think the processes are changing, they're, they're construction processes. Unfortunately, through planning, we're not able to actually give a view of that as building controls.
Can you get this in the mic? And yeah, I think the plan goes as far as we possibly can in terms of house design and build. Probably two, three, we're also having a few planning documents around sustainability by the rest of their game, onsite green infrastructure, as Mike says. And the standards of change are built very offset with the building regulations. They tend to change almost year on year, year at a time, it's higher and higher and higher. And what you can actually achieve by going over and above those working regulations now is getting less because the building regulations coming up so much. And we are seeing, you know, more developments coming forward, so they want to be passing past or more ebiological in front of it. So, I do think, you know, the development industry is actually changing to what the market is driving for people are becoming a lot more conscious of their current footprint, the homes that they've been. And so, I do think the market is driving some of those changes. And I think, I mean, not for the minutes, but I think we're quite lucky in Norwich that we don't have some of the best house builders. And so, developments that come forward in the city are generally much more better built, they've got better installation. And, you know, we're trying to create things like Bolton Street, we did it, we brilliantly can do it, so let's see more of that type of development coming forward.
Okay, I just had, I've been waiting for that to improve last year. The future home standard is due to be, we should be next year, twenty twenty five. That will take them higher again.
So, you want to have a question? So, I guess, so we don't, there isn't, I guess, I must get concerned, I, I love the word sustainable, but I always get a little bit concerned that the definition can become, become, it becomes one of those words which you can listen to, you're sharing.
Sorry, I didn't answer that, I didn't hear your question.
No, no.
So, we, we are the products to follow the definition of sustainable development that is in the national planning policy framework. And it is allowed, environmental, every week, and social sustainability, sets as a national planning policy framework, that's what we're required to apply. We have sustainability appraisal that sets us how our plan is. So, yes, it is about environmental sustainability, it's also about our space sustainability as well.
Three pillars, yeah, three pillars.
Thank you.
Castle Cameron?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, really did you call, just two questions, I want to know the other local office, I was having, he'd known, but I didn't think they could bring it round. And also, did anyone discuss anything about houses for local people and not anyone else? So, what we're doing for is for the people, it needs for a year of this. Not that it's trying to get by our sector, so.
So, this plan is for us, for all to consume. And South Norfolk also can produce plans for their villages, they are producing plans for their villages. The local authorities beyond that, North Norfolk, in the process of planning examination, correctly, not sure of correctly, but all the areas of Norfolk are producing local plans. In terms of housing only being for local people, the only, by our own, that can be done, it's through the name of our plan. As an example, I think in Burnham Market just recently, that only relates to new build housing. But I think they have done it in Burnham Market.
Yeah, it was quite good, it's an art and call.
Yeah, that's right. But we don't have anything on that.
Okay, wasn't there just a discussion at all, because?
And that's like, I think the basis of the discussion of that wouldn't be in the strategy document and site specifications, it would be in development management policies. And so, yes, in our town, Cornwall has a, you know, the plan, I think their policy in their, in their development management policy that specifically says new homes, that they will not be forced out of things or holiday accommodation, yes, it's specifically agreed. And in other areas, in the localities, say North Norfolk, Cornwall, whereas houses are top in the country in second things, Norfolk is second in the country for second things. We obviously have a growing market for that, the accommodation, so it might be something that we would consider. And as Mike said, it can only be done on new build properties, so you can't control anything, it's just always built. But it might be something for us to consider in the DM policy, but it would have to be actual sense.
Any further questions? Castle Cameron?
Sorry. Can we, um, so there was a point, paragraph thirty two, and it talks about, oh, I know, I'm sorry, wrong point, was about, oh, fifty. And then it talks about habitat regulations and focus on international protected habitats. And I just was wondering, because it seems that the Western Link, which was on, I'm a big fan of maps, so I appreciate that map. But it does strike me that a large area of the growth seems to be directly linked to the Western Link Road, which obviously has been, is very contentious because it is going to be damaging habitat. And it seems slightly contradictory that we are talking about protecting habitats and then destroying habitats in order to fulfill the criteria. And I was just wondering if you could comment on that?
Yes. So, none of the growth in this plan is dependent on the Norwich Western Link. We're clear as a plan, that's part of the examination. The Norwich Western Link is shown diagrammatically on the key diagram. It's included in policy four, but it's not supported that. It's recognising that that is something that is being promoted by Norfolk Castle. In the same way that it sets out the runway improvements that are being promoted. So, it's not saying that this is a requirement of the plan, a commitment of the plan, it's just being provided by, as far as, we're absolutely clear that some of this plan is not. Then in terms of habitats protection and so on. So, the two main issues, we have that habitat regulation system. The two main issues that we identified were visitor pressure on sites and the boards that didn't apply to the sustainability, what you're talking about. Visitor pressure on sites and boards, and we have a, quite a hard point to address that to that extent on reducing the impact of this pressure on the boards. Then secondly, nutrient neutrality, that constantly impacts all, what is known. But what the policy does, it says that every development must make sure that they do not worsen nutrient neutrality situation. So, the Norwich Western Link is a separate issue, it will be done through, sort of through the Cape Castle as the transport first.
So, that, the, the housing in the area is independent, that's okay.
Well, we have, we have a, a permanent extension, it's a, it's a, that's not a thing for us. It has, also the transit links into the city and there's other, other transport links to the area. So, it's not, and that's, that is part of the examination, it's, it's really about. Thank you.
Castle Cameron?
Yeah, just one other question, it's really important, let's speak out. Or we'll be up to like, ten years before the new treaty's on, why, if you prefer, that's one of the last things we want to tell us.
Um, yeah, there is. So, yeah. And it's, it's called the housing strategy, it identifies where things will be delivered. So, yes, there is. And in your appendix two, I'm going to do that in the reports, that puts us out, then we, that's a, that's a Norwich delivery.
It's the table.
There we go.
If you want to show me, I'm sure you can, it's really, it's really hard to keep track of this all the time, it is.
Yeah.
So, we now have a pretty, four years, you're looking to be, Castle, by the time you're old, yes, but a half back, yeah, easily.
So, that's very important, thank you. Part of producing a plan is you know it. So, we, our team's going to share every year, how many times we've built, how we're doing on site X, Y, and every year we're able to start sites competing to it. So, yes, there's an annual watch report, so if you just, our offices, when the annual watch report is going to come out, they can provide updated information. So, we have, we will have that in, in our watch reports, we do have the, the watch report document, this, the document is all about what's being delivered, where it's being delivered, it's absolutely critical.
Okay, just over, the annual government, which I suppose we might add our question too, policy won't change completely, depending on the ten year plan, depending to that if the government changes all the policies.
Well, it's, it's forcing the end plan, but it will be reviewed, I mentioned, and it will be reviewed, they will, they always are. If the government changes things significantly, our next plan will reflect that. You always have to follow that in the national planning policy framework. So, that's, our examination was pretty much all about that, is what you're proposing in your plan in line with, so we were judged on the government's requirements, but, you know, it will change in the new government. Thank you.
Any further, yeah, so, okay.
Because it's so exciting, aren't you? So, the biodiversity net gain, which is integral to this, so I just wanted to clarify this. So, the developments, if you're having, we're talking about moving out of the city and expanding to greenfield sites. So, my understanding of this is that after the developments, we would end up with more biodiversity in those areas than they currently in some greenfield sites. Is that the stated intent?
Uh, yes, that's what biodiversity net gain needs, yes, so they have to, well, I don't want to go into too much detail. I'll be, I'll be, I'll be, by the way, so, so you have to do quite detailed assessments on what biodiversity is on that greenfield site currently, then you have to, I'll just try, how do we, it's a, it's a game upon that, first chance that's coming out to you.
Do you want to come back on that point? So, because of your previous statement, within this plan, developers are allowed to, I forgot what you're talking about, externalise, so they, they don't necessarily have to incorporate that into their building, they can offset that elsewhere, is that correct? So?
Oh, if you do, it's my credit, yeah.
Yeah, the credit scheme, exactly.
So, you have, you have a ground for the site where you really could not provide game on this day as possible.
I think we'll cover this in detail in the next, but in a nutshell, there's a hierarchy. So, the preference is onsite, then it's offsite but close, then it's offsite within the industrial boundary, and then it's offsite elsewhere, actually, John will bring me, I'm sure. But, but yeah, so, and further away the harder it gets, basically. And I think there will in the city be some sites that can do quite a bit of offsite, so probably going for quite a low dark range and maybe brownfield site, but it will have some biodiversity there. And actually, some of those collective offsite, a bit near opportunities, might represent some really good biodiversity game, so thinking about some of the smaller parts of land in the city that aren't sizable enough to develop, but are big enough to make a difference. Mike was always a good opportunity for a park or biodiversity that way, tree, etc. So, I think, actually, in the city, you've got a wealth of opportunity to get some really good biodiversity game, through biodiversity net gain, which we will skill the minute.
Okay.
Thank you.
Castle Cameron?
Thank you. Before we talk about the building on the floodplains in the area, the government's had to say, they're, they're, they're responsible, but will the biodiversity strategy be mitigating measures at that?
And yes, as one of the purposes of biodiversity, green infrastructure is to reduce flood risk, are the main issues that it tries to address are increasing active travel and reducing floodwater, yes, but it's very, there's quite limited development of, of the functional floodplain, there is major, the functional floodplain. There's limits, some parts of East Norwich have a small mass of flood risk, the development will be sized to mitigate that flood risk and avoid it twice.
Castle Cameron?
Might come back on that point. Um, there's a development currently actually in Marl Cross, where a lot of the time, although she was a great tool, maybe it was, the criteria of flood risk was once every hundred or thousand years or something. Um, bear in mind, this month, we've had two times as much rain as we have, what you would historically expect, but this is now a point really more. And I get a concern that our criteria for what we consider to be a flood risk is arguably outdated. Bear in mind that if you go down the river at the moment, you know, are the flood risk criteria updated in relation to the ongoing climate alterations that are occurring?
Yes, the environment agency is, so they are taking their information on the, they identify zones of different risks and they regularly update that information. And they have allowance for climate change, which is really, you're asking, okay? So, the mapping is changed over time, so when the foundation cuts in, the latest mapping will be, will be yours. And also, the policies in this plan require sustainable drainage on all developments. That's what needs to do, needs to get a sustainable drainage to reduce this. Overall, the amount of growth in flood risk areas in Chrisor is really very nice.
Thank you.
Any, Castle, yes?
Not a question, but just to thank officers, Mike and Woodford Coates, who have hard worked on producing this over the last, I think, five years, not as long as you do, but we've created several iterations of the strategy and plans, it'll come to provisions. Well done.
And it feels like we're, are we happy for your list to applause and just briefly go back to the recommendation, which is that we recommend, from our city council cabinet, we recommend to, no inspector for the council one, improve the required name modifications in the fantasy council five, UNFP, a dot of UNFP, and we've given, to be, delegate authority to the executive director, development city services, the public adoption statement and company documents, so that the UNFP passed the development knowledge is a requirement that we accept that.
Great.
So, I'm sorry, I was moving, I had asked you to.
So, are you saying you're able to say that?
I'm saying.
We can't record that.
Okay, so we should be doing it, okay.
Right now, it's not recorded though, but if there's, the document for which it's two votes, say, I'm assuming.
So, I ask what? November, we've said, it is, oh, that's, that's what she said. Oh, just wondering, I mean, this is all look, yeah, it's very important.
I, I, I'm listening to the other session, you know, I agree, because I can hear that there are, well, that there are problems that we want to, I understand this, but if you have a family, like we share the heart of it, that's why we do it, but I don't want you to do it.
Well, no, I just wondered if you took control, take all, it might be.
Let's try and ask, of course, I may, of course, it's impossible.
Okay, could we just start again with the vote of youth? So, have you been asked to recommend things to council, or the council, you have options to vote for it there, because it's a council decision, and so you can't, you can't make a recommendation, presumably to council. Very good.
So, can I ask, shall I answer those people in favor? And then, so, okay, very good. So, Castle, that's my answer.
Um, thank you, yes, thank you very much, Mike, for updating us every day, and obviously we work on writing this and updating this, this, over the past seven years, so thank you very much. Really want to talk on this really, but we're just, we're why this, I'm getting something from having, I was, thank you, I'll try.
Thank you. And, come on, just, I really care that, I heard that, I'm sure that you're involved with it. Thank you. Um, so, I'm gonna, just, I really care that, um, about that, because we are all, if you have given, um, that this, I believe, priority was biodiversity net game, I can state, um, obviously, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to, the basics of biodiversity net game, if you're covered, um, but the policy context. And why that's changed. Um, so biodiversity net game, which is used by the more active, um, and requires that development must do, or at least can set net game inside biodiversity compared to its pre-development biodiversity value. So it applies to all major development except exempted development, and I'll come back to that, or after the chart. But very much recently came into force, and then it applies to other minor development except exempted development after, or, 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 some actions made, or after second April. So still, last day, but, but come soon. Um, so, the government has published a list of development types, applicants types are exempt from, from biodiversity net game, so that's their requirement. And there's needs to all that information in the document itself. So applicants need to submit calculation of their pre-development biodiversity value profile with their, um, application, show locations, apply that. And then they need to do this using the statutory biodiversity metric. If that application is approved, all the applications that are subject to biodiversity net game will include a general biodiversity condition and decision notice, which requires a submission approval of the biodiversity game plan before development happens. That biodiversity game, uh, can then be, this is a local authority to discharge the condition, and that has to include further information about the post development biodiversity value proposed mitigation enhancement to achieve that extent of biodiversity net game. And then there are several ways to deliver that, which will come to you later. Um, so, just to kind of go through the policy context, and also why there's been slight changes to the document itself. So technically enhancing diversity through the development process is already part of M P P F. Um, but it doesn't specify the amount of protection enhancing that needs to happen. We've also got, currently adopted, um, so the joint strategy, and then our, um, management policies, and the application of that. We've got several policies dedicated to protecting enhancement of the environment, um. And then the also, as Mike has just said, we're picking up adopting gross national power shortly. So policy three of the G N L P, um, sets out development proposals to be required to conserve and harness the environment through appropriate design. Of all the enhanced match assets, and it also includes a 10% B N G requirement. So, this was, this document, the intensity status, which we intended to be a supplementary plan document, and this was A, because it would have greater weight in decision making, and B, it would support that policy free in the gross national power. So once S P D becomes adopted, it's part of the development plan, so there are strict requirements on what, um, an S P D can cover, or what it can do, and also goes inside its consultation adoption procedure. So last week, after these S P D handcrews were published, and also after this, the temporary implementation date of the N G, the government issued updated guidance in relation to B N G, which says that our plans and guidance should not apply a highly 10% B N G plan unless justified, and should not apply to development types exempt from the statutory B N G. So presently, the text in G N L P has a slightly wider unit in what the statutory B N G requirement is, i.e. the statute requirement applies to certain development types, but certain development types are exempt. The G N L P, of course, didn't include basic actions. Um, so because this was the only one very recently, and that particular bit of policy three is superseded by the recently published guidance. Um, but the B N G requirement, statute B N G requirement is still in place, that's still happening. So, um, because of that, we now have a local policy basis on which to produce supplementary plan documents. But the content of the B N G document is still valid and useful, and so we are intending to keep all of this, reversing it to guidance note. So guidance note has less weight to decision making, but it will still be in the tier of planning decision, material planning consideration, to be decision making. And it still provides useful information for applications to applicants and funders. And it's also worth mentioning that there's lots of things in the government B N G guidelines that are inconsistent, and updates are being continually issued, which makes it quite challenging to produce documents to provide great clarity around the topic. So the guidance note gives us greater flexibility to respond to changes in government guidance, and it's got less restrictions on how we can update your happenings et cetera, so there are benefits to that. So that's the spiel on biodiversity change, hopefully that, that makes sense. Um, just to say as well, that in the introduction of the document, there's some information in here about the other wider things that our city council, um, are working on. But also kind of show our commitment to diversity, so we've obviously got, um, policies in terms of city division, we also have biodiversity strategy that was produced as well, so just to kind of say, there is a wide policy context behind this, including the local major community strategies that the county council can be providing. So the next part of my report goes on to talk about the diversity baseline study. And this is the, um, key evidence documents that's behind the guidance note itself. So the key driver of this was, um, it came from the diversity strategy in the plan, needing to understand all our diversity based values. Um, the baseline itself, um, so the baseline itself sets out a foundation on key species and threats of diversity, and how our opportunities there is in the region, including sites that are identified as recommendations. So that, um, document is available to view online, but, you know, there's, um, it's, on my hands, mate. The summary points are that this is a test, a large test base for assessing diversity. It would be a huge undertaking to relative biodiversity assessment that affects the single site in Norwich, and also any kind of applications we get, simply will be expected to do their own on-site assessment, so it doesn't take place at that. So the study identifies all the habitat types and species that we have recorded in the city. Um, it also did a diversity character review, which are based on, um, shared characteristics and things, it is strategic overview of their diversities and type of diversity areas in Norwich. And we've also got a survey monitoring framework, which sets out recommendations for getting data out, and also monitoring biodiversity changes over time. Um, and both of these documents send, really a key set of recommendations. Um, just to note, these are not solely action score, not particularly council, but these are, um, this is for a wider range of stakeholders, including local, public, private, national, poverty groups, everybody, and it's just a way of setting out what the opportunities are, and the ability to work together with that. Um, so, moving on to the actual document itself. So obviously all the references to S P D in the S P P report will now be, as I know. So the idea of this is to support the implementation of the national regulations and policy in relation to biodiversity net game. To build our best practice, to set out priorities and limitations to ensure that we deliver the right protections in the right places, and to support applicants in getting the plan provisions, by setting out our expectations, B N G, and to build our project around diversity enhancement. So the main sections of the government's note itself, and we have a purpose and a stat- status, which we've covered, as well as the policy content we've covered. The biodiversity coverage section survives key information from the baseline study, it creates a key map as well, so we've got biodiversity hotspot maps, and also the diversity characteristics. The document also introduces the statutory biodiversity net game requirement, the dates it comes into board, links to all the exemptions, it's really sign-based, basically, to where they can find information in the government's own publishing. The, um, following section is a flowchart of how B N G could work through the planning process, trying to summarize quite a lot of, um, violence into, into short diagram. And then we move on to the, speaking, general principles for biodiversity net game, um, that apply across the planning process. So this is, finding those things to be good practice, there's lots of other standards out there about how to implement this, um. One of the things is encouraging these of our pre-application advice firm, so that we can flag up any issues as early as possible. Um, this section also sign, having posted the biodiversity game hierarchy, which Sarah mentioned earlier, which sets out the order of preference of how biodiversity net game should be treated, so that's onsite game should be considered first, followed by offsite game, and then finally purchasing statutory diversity process, but that's the last resort. The section also provides information on the statutory biodiversity metrics, and sign goes to where applicants can find that, or use guides as well. And the key, um, element of this section is the assignment strategic components of biodiversity net game. So the, the, uh, help rate to itself, the metrics, so it allows, um, local planning authorities to locally identify areas um, where provisions of habitats will be deemed to be strategically significant. So this is important because it ensures that a lot of those habitats are appropriately compensated for, but also you're creating habitats in strategically significant locations that you get the benefit of that, there in those locations. So we are setting out the biodiversity baseline study, these are the strategies that set out how strategic significance should be defined in Norwich. And there's also a methodology which has been taken, this was applied consulting to the baseline study for, I think, the methodology. So that sort of sets out the independence of the document, that's how that would work. And there's a section on information that supplies a part of, sorry, as part of a planning application. So a lot of this is set out in regulations itself, but you'll see there is a section where, um, I've got a national colleague, consultation, I've got a national colleagues, um, setting out the additional information that we can be requiring locally, so we have more detail upfront. Um, then we go into section on delivery of biodiversity net games, so increased descriptions of what onsite and offsite being issued delivery is, and cases where it's likely that legal agreement will be required to secure it. Um, so essentially onsite, non-significant onsite B N G, does not need to be secured by legal agreement. So you may look at onsite, and all offsite B N G need to be secured by legal agreement for thirty years. That is a different definition of sign significant, we were referring to earlier on the strategic components. The government has not provided a definition of sign significant in this case, so this will be a determining, this might be explained. And depends on what is on the site already, and what is in the file afterwards. Um, and then at the very end, these appendix with resources about how to use biodiversity metrics, or how to assign strategic significance. So, um, then the paragraph twenty-two in his report, um, said, we're going to go under a statutory consultation period. That would have been the case if this was something, I don't, when, if it's a guidance, so you don't have statutory consultation requirements. However, our statement of community involvement, outlines what we're required to do, so we will be consulted still for four weeks. In order to say no community involvement. Um, the report also says that this will start tomorrow, but we're proposing that that should be Thursday, because we'll have some last minute changes to try and deal with as well. So that's just a minor change, just to let you know. Um, so just to kind of summary, that biodiversity net game is a complicated new subject, which will deliver, um, benefits in Norwich, and this document is already about setting out our expectation trophies to deliver those enhancements and protections in the right places, where we can do that within the limits of what the national regulation say. So our recommendation is for S P P to authorize the consultation four weeks on the draft government's note. The guidance note itself just has very high degrees of word, to refer to guidance note, and also, I mentioned, I have a document, and also, there is this new guidance that's coming last week as well. Um, so after consultation period, um, we would make any changes to the document, we would come back to S P P, and eventually come with adoption, and that will likely be in June. Um, so yes, any questions? Uh, questions were on. Councilor Cameron.
Yeah, this is what we're calling in O C, in the, people talking about consultation, to settle that, how would that be possible?
So if you don't have any, uh, specific requirements of how we have to do it in the same community involvement, but what we're going to be doing is, there'll be part of these in the forum, that is for, there will be everything available on our website, we've got a local plan stakeholder database that will email the link for the website too as well, um, which has lots of different organizations on it, um, and there will also be a social media site, communications team.
And if we can have a winner, give you a reward.
I think so, yeah, I mean, that's the, that's following the same of the community involvement for, you know, what we would expect to do, it says we can do what is appropriate or not in the same.
Okay.
Um, I feel with councilors, because of the, I don't know, the portfolio here, and I should, I was going, then councilor Paul, and councilor, um, whose name is, this is, this is working, but, um.
Uh, thank you, uh, just, uh, to start off with, um, thanks Charlotte for all of your hard work on this, and I think, you know, the way the government have rolled out this obligation environmental act through, uh, several rounds of statutory instruments, it's been, I'm sure, chaotic, so. Well done for, for keeping up, and, you know, for, you know, getting papers published and things changed again. Uh, in, in terms of the status of the document, and it, and in the guidance note, uh, part of an S P D, and would there be opportunities to upgrade that at any stage, or because of which the conclusion of G N L P now has that opportunity passed, or when we have a chance to, um, review our development management policies, would that potentially be quite a policy basis for upgrading it?
And, the answer to that, surely, yes, there would be the potential that that could be converted to S P D. Not on the basis of the great match over the time, but if through the development management policies review, B N G is specifically put in there, it would just depend on what that policy would say, and whether that went over the law. Because the guidance said that we can't go open up the national requirement saying, so it's just think that way, or I'll, like, having a policy to do anything additional to that. If we won't ever refer to it, and I would plan a policy, then we wouldn't be able to have an S P D.
So the other thing to remember here is that it is the law, so this is statute, I would say, you know, whilst we may all have a specific S P D, it's, like, say, it is a statute, and we're supposed to have to do, so it does quite a significant job.
Uh, uh, councilor, what do you think?
Um. Thank, thank you, Charlotte, especially for the last little changes in that domain, I can't blame you, you said, you know, the other.
We're good, too.
And I didn't quite catch what you said about how it would be, um, the consultation would appear on the website.
So there will be, um, there's a consultations page on the website.
There's a seat consultation.
For consultations, yes.
Go to that.
And then there will be a section on there for biodiversity net game guidance note, and it will say where you can find documents, how to comment, when you need to comment, by, all those details of what happens next.
So that's beyond the trial facility for a period of four weeks.
A period of four weeks, yes.
That's, it's very similar, I, the record, too. The other question was about, um, um, oh, who pays for the monitoring? I mean, there's a lot of monitoring going on, on this diagram, um. Is that included within the fee to be? Um, is that included within the fee to leave development?
So the, when a, when the biodiversity game is secured. So if it is, if it's not significant biodiversity game, there's no requirement to secure it in the legal agreement. If you do need to do that, as part of the legal agreement, you can set monitoring fee as part of that. So you can recruit some of us through, for example, section I six agreement. That's just one.
Thirty years is a long time.
It is a long time. So at the moment, the guidance note doesn't specify what that might be. But between paragraph, I'm trying to find it, it was paragraph twelve point two, the actual guidance note. It states that we reserve a right to charge the monitoring and public legal agreement. So this is obviously subject to further work out or detailed action at half past. Um, but there is that opportunity to recruit monitoring classes.
And the, the last question was about the statutory line of diversity praise as the last resort. Um, where would they likely be in Norwich or in surrounding area? Or far down many miles away?
They could be anywhere. Um, the, the difference is when you're considering the statutory metrics, calculate your pre-term value and your post-term value. Anything that is the post development value, the further away from your current site you're providing that BNG, the more BNG you have to provide. So it incentivizes you providing energy as close as possible if you provide less of the same development. So that's built into calculations and incentivizes delivering closer. But if you were buying statutory, there's no guarantee where that enhancement would actually be delivered. So we can't answer that question, I'm afraid.
And we do pay pretty costly when I can't really definitely do something in general.
It depends what type of habitat it is, but they are ten to ten to thousands. Some, some particularly high stakes habitat, so they might need thousands per credit.
It would be nice if we were going to be bought, we're going to be bought a farm in Norfolk, the money locally. But I see various farms sort of turning their land over to credits and just waiting for the money to roll in.
So there's a difference between statutory credits and other offsite credits. So statutory credits are the ones being sold by government.
Right.
They are very expensive credits when you own that credit. And that's the last resort. Offsite credits, so they could be somebody who has a big plan and they want to do enhancement on. And they could sell those credits locally to developers. But in order to do so, they have to be registered on national level as a registration person who's got the specific price. But that option is also available and preferable to the statutory credits.
So good, thank you.
Um, counsel, what? Yeah, I just, um, who didn't answer the question that was then asked, I guess, in the case of politics. And I have a few questions, um, on capacity with the planning department and monitoring enforcement. And I'm just wondering whether there would be some of the freshest knowledge of biodiversity will be able to assess that issue in the planning department, the department, or they're probably, um, organized. And then, and I was just wondering if one of the troubles, um, is biodiversity can be monitored. Because truly it has to be based on thirty years and do you have an ideal, is a guidance, do you have a problem with that? In terms of, um, at work, in terms of that needs to be monitored. And also is that, that, when this game is being played, sorry, is that, is that going to specify, um, and then one within the following thirty years? When, when, when is the point where the biodiversity demonstrate that they actually achieve that game? And I, I heard you asking what the hierarchy, but I just wanted to ask, um, what obligation for our, and I have two priorities. Priorities on site games, I'm interested in, you know, by credits on my own kind of, um, how I strip that of the guidance. So how would be, what does the guidance do as much as possible? Um, yes, I think my last question is about, um, the status of implications that have already been submitted now before this guidance has been published or clarified, I wonder if I can understand how they're going to do it. Thank you.
Oh, do you, you can do this all slide. I'll, I'll start. Um, yeah, um, as, as the coming up goes, you come in, um, the condition is obviously then attached to a commission as well. This is a mission of later information. And we're currently in terms of our partner authorities, you've got specialist ecology advice. And then we can see the board authority, we need to know the service agreements and we've got that specialist ecological support and advice to our officers um, in determining those discharge conditions. So we're absolutely in that. And very well, mainly it should be enforced, we need, um, off the back of this. So it's all very well, that's securing, agreeing, um, and then doing, which when you can't talk about discharge condition, you know, to implement it. Um, and so the monitoring may then, well, actually this is either stopped working and it's not doing what it's supposed to be doing, or you haven't done it, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm considering potentially enforcement around this, certainly planning enforcement, um, offering, um, policy subjects, but it, um, it always asks for growth. Um, but we are completely involved with that and to our frequency and the monitoring. So I don't know, I don't know what you said, you said before, again, unfortunately, I don't know. Um, so about, about the monitoring years, that is up for us to create a couple of legal agreements. I'm sure those are best practice or guidance available as to what that might be. But also it does depend on what BNG is being provided. Something that is quite small or not very complex might not be monitored. It's often something really, really very complicated. So, um, that element of guidance note isn't fully fleshed out at this stage. This is kind of a learning process continuing. But that's the benefit of guidance note is that as we go through this process, we can always update the guidance note as we work through these processes in more detail. In terms of where does the energy have to be delivered? That is also secured via the legal agreement. So certain habitat types will take longer, so establish should be considered as complete. So that will need to set out as part of game and legal agreement. Um, and when they commit their biodiversity game, the planning is charged with their condition. They have to show within that how they have met the hierarchy. So they have to justify why they can't deliver on site or why they can't deliver nearby before they go ahead and purchase credits. So they have to provide justification for the part of the assessment of that game plan before it's approved.
Can I, can I, can I, can I do that as we can assess the justification of it? Which is just going, like, oh, well, you know. Um, not at this stage. Um, and it will also be dependent on this site by site basis. So some sites might not be able to do it onsite because they're really tightly constrained around all sites. For example, that might not be possible. Um, it's difficult to say because it's going to be different from another site. And it will be up to the applicant or their colleges that they're employing to justify that to us.
And I think that's why I'm looking at especially support from other authorities to say, well, actually, this is a useful option and you might consider it. So I, I think offices will have some idea of, you know, for a given money. And but yeah, I don't think that ability to tie into such security advice is something really important that we might need.
And counsel, what?
Yeah, I was, well, I can't give you my, or, or, but I think we actually did the science in the inverse class and identified, oh, this father will get people to do all your setup. And that's about so many years, ten families of credits. It's a couple of years old. Or this is just a father of all my children, trouble, people, someone, my name, to all sort of people who give us money to, uh, up the rest of all the time. Or can we actually do this? I mean, it was recently, you know, the pink seat, you know, the pills in the eight forty-seven. And the label up there was, I, I, what happened here? I don't know. You know, it's just like putting things on there. I thought, well, we said, we should get something, yeah, it's not actually, yeah, it worked, okay. But see, we could deal, you know, this, you know, this is funny for someone or not, or, or, or. Or this is weird, it's not making a difference to the biodiversity of normal rule.
So in terms of providing BNG sites themselves, that would be down to whoever owns the land as to whether they want to do that. And it might be that a developer uses its plant, if you in Norwich owns a land somewhere else. They say, well, we haven't done that for a bit, and you start, are we BNG, whatever. But that's up to the landowner to decide, I'm going to put forward my site.
To build a station, but, 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 but on top of that.
Sorry, say that again.
You could actually buy a barn.
Yes, you can.
Buy a barn and then put the boulders into the city until you all set up onto the same care.
That in theory, yes, but it would have to be justified why they couldn't deliver it onsite first. So they would have, they would have to set out a reason, justification to say, I can't deliver onsite, I can't deliver anywhere closer. This is my only, this is my best option. And we would look at that and say that was an appropriate assessment that's been made before we agree that.
I think this is, this is really key to why we've got biodiversity based studies done. So we can understand the biodiversity of the city. To say, oh, actually, there are multitude opportunity areas which may be very close to site. So if you can't provide something onsite and offsite, it's only an option. Offsite, I feel, I'm going to go to Norwich or offsite to have a road. We would have some improvement anywhere that could go. Because we know that based on the research actually, in offset and the way closer, because you're going to get unpayable kind of look. Um, I think, yeah, as Charlotte says, it is up to them. And if they have some man out there, they could say, I'll tell this time, you know, I'll do it for a while, I don't know, if people, whatever it would be like. But they will have to justify that, you know, you'd really try to.
And counsel, what?
Um, as my shadow cabinet role is, um, and counsel to, um, the house in general, it's just the context because he was introduced earlier. Um, you, it's unfortunate we didn't contact me, not to prove to you. I've got significant, um, concerns with the methodology of the, um, biodiversity, the biodiversity baseline study. That it is, um, best based and that there could have been bias in the sense of areas which are historically being looked at, will therefore get greater, um, greater input, um, impact. And, um, for instance, I recently brought a swift motion to the council. And one of the issues we found with that was there are some areas of the city which were more accurate, where people were engaging and gathering data and made, it gave disproportionate, um, it, it didn't give the full picture. And in relation to that, and also within relation to biodiversity strategy, we talk about stepping stones and biodiversity protocols. And I'm confused as to how the biodiversity strategy, the biodiversity baseline strategy and this document align. Because it strikes me that we are meant to be creating protocols and passing biodiversity. But if there are areas which we consider biodiversity hotspots, by contrast, there's going to be areas which we consider to be biodiversity denuded here. Um, but we don't know that because we haven't actually done a, we, our methodology doesn't reflect this reality. So there are areas of the city which might appear to be denuded in biodiversity. But this is based on a, you know, based on data which has been submitted from, um, other organizations. And I don't know if that makes sense, if my concern makes sense. And so I'm just interested, how do we align these three different things? And it would be a conversation, which I would like to have previously, and I've had to bring it here. You know, and so I know it's a complicated piece of the question, but how do we do that? How, if we've got a, you know, how are we doing that?
Um, I think corporately, there's a biodiversity strategy which is much more wide than what we can control and influence and manage through planning system. Um, and that's been led on by Helen Chamberlain's team through Phil Hunt, um, and then Strackley. And they often report updates to the biodiversity strategy through the C P P, it's a primary, a primary.
Just make a point for the record, if I may, just for the record, the last two C meetings, one was cancelled and the other was not core because not enough members attended. Just, I might not notice, just because it's that's, you know, the method.
Um, one of the actions of our corporate biodiversity strategy, I'm kind of really, it's not helpful, they're all kind of called by the same things. And is for a biodiversity S P D to be produced, um, which is what has been produced here as a result of that statutory requirement for the energy coming in and off the back production of the G I P. Whereas we just heard it's now that I'm purely of that statutory. Um, in order to inform where we might want to seek biodiversity game, if it is onsite, we've done the baseline study. Um, completely set the course, but it is demonstrated, we'll be influenced by other areas that normally had, were done and looked at. There is a map in the biodiversity baseline strategy, which I've seen some of these, um, with those kind of hotspots marked on it. And I think actually what we need is looking at the hotspots in that same map. So, and, you know, we're looking to create green corridors and there are no cold spots, hot spots. We need to look at opportunity sites in those areas to make the links. I don't want to be enhancing something that's always good. We want to be enhancing the places where there's a lack of biodiversity to really get that, that connection and those links improving. Um, to do an onsite study would have been astronomically expensive and we still wouldn't have it. We wouldn't have it in three years' time. And so I think this is the best we've been able to do to get us to actually what is a good starting point. Guidance on this is constantly changing, new information is constantly coming out. I think any monitoring of future BNG games will inform updates to the baseline study. So where are we making those positive interventions? Where do we need to look next? Um, but for me, this is very much about making the advice in the future. We haven't got that biodiversity, we've been making those basic ways.
And just as, as well as the, um, to that, that the, the guidance baseline itself does recognize the recording of violence problem. Um, so that, that component exists and consultants who did this study are aware of that. Um, the information is available is what is available. So they have, as I said, we've got a study based on the information that we have available. But part of the survey monitoring framework recommendations are how would we improve the information that we have for, you know, future situations or future policy opportunities, future use. So, um, just to note that that hasn't just kind of been ignored entirely throughout, it has been acknowledged.
Thank you, that is a very short one, but I actually noticed it. Um, but just for clarity, there is no, there is no capacity within this document to, um, enforce biodiversity game in areas in the cold spots. That those developers could still do that in a different location. That, so there's, so in a lot of ways, this document doesn't necessarily guarantee enhancement of biodiversity in areas of denuded biodiversity.
Um, it doesn't, it shouldn't be easier to do onsite biodiversity game where there's a lack of resi, if that makes sense. So if you've got a site that's increased on resi, you're going to have to go, you know, you're in a bug, if you've got a site that pretty much has nothing actually introducing ten percent biodiversity game onsite, it shouldn't be pretty easy for a developer. So we are hopeful that actually this requirement will drive our first group of friends across all sites.
Okay.
Um, I've got counsel, generally, I've been.
Thank you, I apologize, counsel champion, for not getting around to relive that round of last week. I, I can't wait to see, so my apologies for that. Uh, my question was going to be in relation to, um, the qualifications of the person employed by the developer to, uh, conduct the assessment of pre-development biodiversity value site. And I know that the report says that, you know, the use of a professional oncologist is, is recommended. But I'm just seeing if that's being pleased by a layperson is presumably. But I'm just seeing if that's being pleased by a layperson, is presumably, maybe scopeful for the bias there. And how would we assess that, uh, in the application consideration process?
So the statutory B and G government guidance just states that the metric must be completed by a competent person. It does assess by what competent person means. Um, so the idea of, in our guidance note, there is an extra power within our consultation, our D M colleagues. We've asked, we will be asking as part of this mission, we've prioritisation, more than set out your plans for that competency person to do their metrics, so that our planning officers can have confidence in what's being submitted. And if somebody submits something that says that they, you know, can't justify why they're competent, then that will obviously be queried each time.
I think, as I say, we're meeting, as I said, we're really reasonable specialists ecologists. And they will know to read the reading of the study, and they will say, maybe the samples are hard.
Uh, councillor.
Uh, plenty of years, it's the, the question I had with regard to, um, credits. I was wondering about being in place of the council as an example, um, saying, sometimes I have some mistakes. So, you know, probably also the cut parts and, um, where you tell there is, it also is how much responsibility we have, presumably, um, presumably you can't, and that's always as the most accurate appreciation for anybody who can have any prior interest. And I was wondering, yeah, what our opportunities are, also about the songs, the firm of the sites. So now it ends on the rock and roll, but I think it's from a little micro site credits, which will fit in all of, um, cities and all, so just something like that. And something that is, so with regard to, if you have a site with, um, very little biodiversity and, um, some change happens, then you get a ten percent net gain quite straightforwardly. Is that same area anything to use again in the future? Could you put another ten percent on to the existing ten percent? Because that sounds legitimate, I mean, that's almost as practical.
Uh, telling you the first point first, I can remember, and we've got, um, biodiversity net gain, it's nearly moving, I can't remember the term. Um, and, and Sammy Tango and Mark Brown sit on that, and they are looking at areas around the council that we may not want to promote for developments, housing, but which are pretty, or bigger than you would just want to kind of seek a space for. Uh, for some of those opportunity sites, same, um, for offsite, um, you know, offsite provision of the N G, but in a more meaningful way, we can enable to group the development sites to contribute to something being, effectively. So that is a big attack, and, and the governance measures of that for the council all need to be worked up, um, and considered. And in terms of the, the second point, uh, possibly, um, I, you know, we, we have a site that produces something kind of, um, gives us ten percent of use of pocket park, we might get another ten percent off, off-site contributing someone else to enhance the landscape of that plant or tree, et cetera. Um, you know, or, you know, do the site jockey to, to connect some of these things. But, you know, I don't think there's anything that says you can't enhance an existing site. But do you think we would be looking to, you know, make links more widely and, and produce biodiversity across the whole city? Not just hightall into some weather to refuel them, if that makes sense. Yeah, there's going to be a mixture of everything, though.
Um, councillor.
Thank you. Um, I'm a little bit interested in your work, which was like ten, and then when you touched on it, I was just, they're working through the G C A. Um, yes, on the top of my head, it's the, the link to the exempted person is in this document, so if you want to explore this. But on the top of my head, I can remember, um, household developments is exempt, so exemptions to existing houses. Um, prior approval for immediate developments, applications are exempted. There are some things that we would have a, like, so like urgent crime development and patients to, stuff. Um, and then there is also a particular line which I would have to read in a lot more detail again to tell you exactly what criteria are about. Those sites that are on your certain size and do not have any priority habitat are also exempt, there's a specific requirement. So this is one of the other resource things that we've been talking about, is that we're going to have to double check that as part of planning occasions coming in, is it exempt or isn't it? So, yeah, it's fairly detailed, we didn't know that the exemptions were going to be as wide ranging as they were. And the B and G was originally introduced, so that was something past the experts. But, uh, I think for me, one of the, one of the exceptions is around self-built, custom-built content. Um, and that is an area that I think we're going to need to be quite careful with. We might still be seeing influx of lots, seven or eight houses, but seven or eight self-built, custom-made houses. Um, so we're going to have to be quite attuned to that in terms of biodiversity implications, but, um, we are already aware of that.
And councillor, do you have to count?
Absolutely.
Being touched by that, I can't say that we have to.
Uh, yes, I think she'll regularly gaze at the people suffering the same pain as us. And we are definitely learning for, for the best practice, everyone in the council has already got this in the communication then about the transit or the scale. I'm just saying, actually, we are substantially advanced with our, with our resources.
Yeah, and.
Uh, thank you. Uh, in terms of, uh, income from, uh, developers, should they wish to seek pre-act advice? Should they wish to use us for, uh, monitoring? Um, are we only able to charge at cost, or are we able to, uh, generate income from those services?
Uh, in terms of pre-act, we're only allowed to cover the cost, providing that lines and other monitoring have been the same, so. And the degree for a run to a plan on the statutory needs.
Uh, any last questions on this before we move on to the last question? I suppose.
Sorry to be a comment.
Um, uh, yes, uh, one colleague reflected, um, uh, mentioned it earlier. Uh, in terms of, uh, off-site, uh, uh, credits, um, within the local area. Um, do we have to be, uh, neutral as to whether or not that's a site that we're, that we own? Um, or can we prioritise sites that we own? Uh, and I'm just thinking in terms of, um, our capacity internally to take forward those opportunities. Obviously, we own vast quantities of, of land, vast quantities of natural areas, uh, in, in Norwich. Um, and any assessments you make on capacity to take forward these opportunities, uh, which will hopefully come in from, you know, Smith and Matt Bigg.
We're not allowed to preferentially recommend council credit, council credit, council own lands. But it is allowed to be an option. And obviously, it's up to whoever wants to purchase those credits, where they purchased them from, and that will come down to price. And also location, because if it's strategically significant or closer to the site, they will get more benefit from those. So there will be multiple factors kind of in play with that.
Sarah, I'm not sure if you're able to answer about capacity to take forward opportunities.
Um, yeah, I think it, it depends on where those sites are, who owns them, how we would be looking to, to do anything. So if it's something we would be looking to create, we obviously need to have a look at that implications, but, et cetera. Anyone who's thereafter maintaining that, who might ask for a cost, that would be such a six. Um, it is in the forefront of our minds and saying, I need to turn with Mark Brown and looking at this in the governance measures about how we might be able to do that, to the very end of the stage.
There's one last one.
Um, can I bring my poller in for you, because I'm kind of.
No, just a really quick query, um, when you said maybe think, would that, that council resume that zero, uh, as well as being, we think it was council provided that. And after the things, you know, kind of.
Possibly, yeah.
But, um, how much of a moment, yeah, if I wanted to.
Uh, thanks, I was going to ask about the, you know, the interaction between biodiversity net gain, nutrient neutrality, and, and, and show rounds, uh, and it's obviously three separate distinct obligations, but, um, the overlaps between them and, and how, you know, as a developer and as a planning authority, who would manage those overlaps?
Um, they are sort of many, and they're also sort of entirely separate. So obviously, green infrastructure has a requirement now, um, to either by onsite green infrastructure agreements or offsite green infrastructure agreements. We, um, we require a tariff to be paid for any recreational, or, it's litigation, I can't remember what I understand, so that one. And so that's a second, uh, payment tariff. Nutrient neutrality, obviously, developers will need to buy credits to offset the litigation for that. And then this is an additional requirement on top of that. Um, where the overlaps occur is, for example, there might be a site that provides nutrient neutrality litigation that can also be considered to be green infrastructure, that thereafter provides biodiversity net gain, and it's on top of that as well. Um, they could be pretty special sites to be, to be absolutely everything. Um, but as you continue, there are a series of legislative changes happening, which are really driving the green agenda on developments. And so we've got some issue based on the mitigating, you know.
Um, I'm probably the last one, I'm going in, councillor.
Uh, thank you. Is there anything else we should be watching out for? I mean, if you're, I've been there for a long time, and who am I going to be about this? New show, another, another thousand things, or like four or five years ago. Is there anything that I'd be coming again and really shock the whole system, or we would have to do something else? Because I'm often sure we're telling, or someone else left Britain, and that, that took a long while to get to us. But is one of anything else could creep up and take us bad, and we should be looking for?
Yes, I see, I, I will never forget one fifteen on Wednesday, sixteen, March twenty twenty two. Um, yes, I think we're always kind of horizon scanning for things that, that might come over the hill. There's obviously a lot of planning reform being proposed at the moment, uh, whether in terms of policy, helping with the plans, potential change in government might kind of drive any of those agendas. So we're always kind of looking at things that might kind of be pointing out some direction where, where things might change. Um, sometimes, um, you know, things just get changed and you don't know about them. Um, but, I mean, obviously, the nutrient neutrality, it was happening elsewhere in the country, and it was a surprise just in fact.
Thank you, um, I'll bring us back to recommend, I think, from where we've spoken slightly in the last, in our papers, I think. So, um, it may be a bit limited, but it's the same, we don't have authorized public consulting. Four weeks, is it on drugs, that could be biodiversity net gain targets. I hope this is adequate for, for now, and, and does everyone support that?
Yes.
Um, agreed, excellent. So move on to, I'll thank you very much for, um, bringing us to the turn down in the past. And following that, I'm going to place agenda, I hope citizens, we should bring in the council, of course, very soon to, um, to speak. Come on, sorry. Great, yes, thank you very much. Okay, um, I was going to do a brief introduction to the, to this, um, this space in the monitor and sort of set in context. And then we'll be able to ask some questions afterwards, but a lot of people are kind of just, as I've had. Good morning. So, um, this survey, um, was carried out in October of last year, at the Council Centre and District and local centres. And generally speaking, monitoring, uh, of the soil, takes place annually, and it's, it's about two thousand and eight. But occasionally we have one, one, uh, monitor in a year. And while we had, uh, a lot of, we didn't have, you know, for a period of time, didn't have a monitor. So two, um, there were two reports carried out, the most recent one was in October twenty twenty two, but one in March that year as well. So just to say, before we get into the, the detail, but, um, as well as monitoring the detail, I think we see we also, in, in the last couple of years, we've also monitored what we call high-street users, and they have been enjoying entertainment, restaurants, policy, et cetera. Um, and that's considered important to include users as well, because of the general acceptance, getting the policy to make that high streets need to evolve in order to survive, so we monitor that, those activities as well. So just to say, the context of this particular report is that the previous report in October twenty two showed significant reduction in the N G rates for both floor spacing units, so it was looking very hostile at that point. Um, the, the one, the, the monitor for that happening, supposedly, October twenty two, that it was quite, um, hostile. However, things have, have probably, have changed a little bit in the last year. Um, overall, the city remains a robust and thriving retail centre. The twenty twenty three survey shows that particularly retail floor space has increased somewhat over the last twelve months since the previous, uh, survey, and vaguely, but vaguely, it's continued to fall. And footfall in the city centre has returned to the pandemic level. So that being in some areas where our vacancy has probably worsened, but overall, it's a reasonably positive picture. So if you, the way the report is organised, it looks at different areas of the city, centre, and other parts of the city as well. So it's helpful for those who are pretty, pretty old, the sort of headlines, if that's okay. So there's in the city centre itself, um, there's a, an increase, sorry, retail, they have floor space in city centre compared to twenty twenty two. And it's gone up to sixteen percent after league, which is an increase quite, um, from twelve point two percent of the previous survey. Um, however, that we, uh, consider is probably down to the actual closure, which is quite large, you know, so that's about the floor space. And the unit since the city centre have continued to decrease year on year. So they've gone, um, down to, uh, twelve point three percent in the, that's down a couple of percent of this quarter from the last. Um, so that's, so Norwich overall compares heavily to the average national retail vacancy rates. Although it's not always possible to do very, um, accurate comparisons of the other cities, because of the way they're acting. In terms of the high-street users that I was mentioning earlier, if you factor those into vacancy, they actually now increases the vacancy rate. So they, floor space for all those high-street users, including the retail, and all the leisure, et cetera. Sounds like seventy percent, that's a little bit since, um, October twenty two survey. Uh, it hasn't really affected the vacant units, that's large, that's, um, that's unchanged thirteen percent. So one thing to note is that there's been continuing reduction in the, the amount of retail of floor spaces in city centre. That's, that's been really long for quite a hundred years, and, but the rate of, of loss appears to be, um, slowly dying. There was a less than one percent decrease between twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three. And the loss seems to be largely due to changes of these other high-street users, rather than floor residential being demolished. Um, they, there was a particular loss to two fore-shots in Castle Quarter, um, in, in this period. So this is through a process of diversification underway, reflecting the force, a flexible approach set out in, uh, state-owned league and national policy. And so there is continued loss of national chains from city centre, for example, locals, I mentioned, everything has had the nature of the, of the floor space in city centre. Um, primarily the retail area, it's hard, actually, you know, it's hard, if you've got a complete, or your actual documents itself, uh, even with your papers, uh, the map that's on the issue, that shows the, the retail area, primary area. These are the floor spaces, the vacancy rate has increased from last survey, up sixty point eight percent. Um, and we think that's mainly due to the cost of living prices, but also partially due to the loss of work. In terms of the second retail area, if you want to look at the map on the issue in twenty two papers, that's showing the second retail area. And that includes the Benedict, for example, and, um, the, uh, the retail park. Things have risen here, got up to over twenty five percent in, um, in twenty twenty three for the floor space. Um, but twenty, by twelve to ten in terms of vacant units. And this is primarily due to the, to the loss in twenty eighteen, and further, you know, in the retail park in twenty twenty one. And this is primarily due to the difference in floors in 2018 and further in the retail part in 2021. If you take the, the retail park figures, right, the secondary, um, retail area figures, that actually results in a completely different picture. So you've got nine percent, uh, nine point seven percent vacant floor space and eleven percent in terms of vacant units. So it, it's down to those particular units. Um, however, just to know that the planning commission was granted recently, the, um, consolidation reformation of the vacant units and the retail part. So if that commission's implemented, that may be an impact on the, it's, it's in that area. Um, looking at the other part, it's the large district centres. And that's the, um, centre of armed riverside area and also the vital streets of West End and, um, and this where vacant floor spaces increase to eight point seven percent, but that's still lower than a couple of years ago. And it's that area that was large district centre, truly, um, relatively competitive. The rest of the city centre, that's the streets at the right side of the defined areas. There's been a minor increase in floor space, unfortunately, it's a relative positive picture for those areas. The district and local centres, um, there's been slightly increased, but it's still very little six percent in the district, including centres around the city centre. So this suggests that, um, in the neighbourhoods there, you know, with us, these, these centres are vibrant and offering maybe a range of, um, little sense and facilities. Um, just to say about the independent sector, um, vacancy rates have been historically lower within the secondary retail area, apart from the cathedral retail park in Martin Street, large district centre, being lower there than the primary retail area. But, um, there is some concern expressed in the document itself about the, um, future trends in those areas probably due to, um, the impact of the cost of living crisis and so on. So I'm sort of, perhaps seven of the actual report is to accept that the concerns have been highlighted. Um, so. So, yeah, it's, um, it's been reported by the data, it has on the front of the nation, the dependence on a national basis, experience of course reported net change in the sector since records began. Things like rising energy prices, um, lower consumer spend are sort of clearly into that. So something that's worth keeping an eye on in terms of future monitoring. Um, just to do then, um, the report acknowledges that retailing time centre uses are a bit of a classic moment. Um, uh, but this goes reinforcing the need to protect and promote time centres to allow them to evolve and respond to changing circumstances. Um, vacancy rates are predicted by then, I believe, to increase in the second half of 2024 due to things like inflation, high, uh, cost of living and so on, but the likelihood to level out. But overall, it's to recite that Norwich remains, um, relatively robust and vibrant as retail centre. And that vacancy, um, is generally, uh, the picture is generally positive apart from the increase in vacant floor space. Um, so it's something we will keep monitoring. And, um, we mainly tend to have that always on, on doing things to sort of cultivate and influence the cities you offer, such as working more closely with the bid and with these stakeholders, but we will keep monitoring that and we intend to do another monitor later this year. So, please share any questions. Thank you very much. Uh, any questions? Catherine, yeah.
Um, so I guess, I was, I was curious how the, and thank you is a, again, I bet it's not really.
Do you like some of this?
Yeah, it's fantastic, but very true. Um, but I was just going to ask, in, I was trying, uh, I might have avoided it, but how is the council supporting local businesses to, you know, to, to keep going? Are we, what are we doing to facilitate that?
I don't quite be answering my question. Um, I think it would be, um, something useful to get to know and learn from it. Um, I think it's something for consideration, um, in any DM policies we use. Governments may change between retail and used to use easier. Um, whether there's any further flexibility, we'll use accounts considered for, um, startup office space or smaller pop up shops or things like that, you might be over considering. I think the, the big thing to note here is that it's the lots of those big national retailers that are making the difference. Actually, even in two weeks' time, honestly, it's in the Johnson Stevens Street, the old B H S, that's what it was. And so, uh, is again, again, you see that vacancy rate change to a pretty large floor space. It's, it's the big national returns in Sinnscrewe that they have just moved online or at least, um, um, and actually, I'm independent in Sarl at the moment, too.
Thank you.
Uh, council jobs?
Uh, thank you. It, it's, it's connected to, to what Barry said in the sense that, um, uh, obviously we, we, we collect this monitoring data, retail monitoring data. Do we share it with partners and, and just the economic development team discuss with partners? How to tackle, uh, some of these issues in response to the data we're collecting? And just briefly, in response to Gary's point, the council's son, we have a better answer. I know we do procure, uh, the LEQ to give business, uh, advice and support um, to businesses in the city, uh, using UKSPF funding, you should go to the LEQ directly. We also procure, uh, fees, CIC, to provide specialist business support to, uh, social enterprises and corporatives. But let's say, council's son would be the best person to speak to. Thank you.
Uh, council, you ready?
Yeah, I was just wondering how you judge would be to balance stores disappearing, like, uh, Richard thought, uh, the woods. And then I really, like, and, quite a lot. Talking the same to me, but the floor space is going to be the same and disappearing. I mean, no, we calculate that kind of bringing a big voice out to me, uh, about charity shops in the origin, the suburbs, on your stage, it's charity shops, charity shops, charity shops. You know, and, and independent businesses, uh, disappear with as well. I was just wondering about, about that as well, with, uh, one part which you called, called, uh, student classes, I love that. I was, did we, we got, like, a lot of that taken to our agencies and, uh, that's billions too, I mean.
I think we, we're seeing more of quantitative analysis, we don't do a quantitative analysis of, of the loss of one shop that, that means that in terms of, I think, that's quite dangerous territory to continue to see. Um, I think when we look at the scale of the progress in the city, um, you know, we are considering, you know, to foot all that migraine. Um, so positives and negatives to having five hundred revestments in a city. And, and that's obviously something that we consider in any planning application. Um, just to go back to the, the previous point, I do believe there's a kind of economic strategy going to be developed. Uh, something the city council doesn't have at the moment, and I think there's an aspiration that we do have on. So that we have the camaraderie, actually, where do we as a city centre want to go? And what is our aspiration economically? I think that is something that's been moved.
Okay, I don't know, what's your, what about English?
Um, I don't know, I believe Johnny's the man who's driving that, so if I was to ask you to.
So I'll do it, you also.
Thank you.
Follow on that.
Thank you. Um, I just sort of mainly is that, uh, has the council potentially be in two consultations undertaken by other councils, such as Norfolk County Council, um, with their fertile sometimes, which may impact on the, for their businesses. Is that maybe to do with the transport for Norwich, um, community at all? I'm just taking one example, I know our central council version of the park and ride to the city.
Yes, obviously, um, any kind of proposals around transport, we would actually have a few consultations that go strongly, as we saw, maybe give it to the city councils. We, um, we were certainly very robust, for example, about the reopening of Exchange Street, closing that industrialization, about how huge positive effect. Um, and we were very, very, really, kind of sensible, we were kind of against the reopening of that. And, you know, we were definitely, uh, feeding to the conversations on that matter. Yeah, and from my experience, it's about the transport probably, yeah, will respond formally, but there's transport in Norwich, there are meetings as well. Our, we can make, our points quite firmly in frank enough, but I might as well also fortunately develop that. So Exchange Street, you know, the ones affecting that kind of city centre, other ones of the businesses, so making those quite. Um, council jobs?
Uh, thanks. I was just going to say that we do have an economic strategy, 2019 to 2024, that was updated in 2022. Um, so I think that's about the primary retail area. It was just in, in relation to the retail monitoring data and the sharing of it with the economic development team, partners and work unit. If that happened, whether they have access and obviously public information, so, whether they, they, whether they use this information.
All I would say is it's, it's always published on the website, so, you know, they refer to, to it for it. But yeah, I suppose it's, um, there is an, an, I can sort of maybe see there's some way that they can be more open, or whatever, but, but any changes to circumstances as well, so. Now, council, look.
Yeah, I, I think sort of working with partners like big, sort of, they are sort of perhaps closer to the people who are, um, you know, taking up empty shops or thinking of expanding and such like. And I think if we could be more sort of perhaps fit, fitted about the ability for people to have pop up shops and, and places like that, I think we can, would encourage people's, you know, market stores, perhaps easiest, but, um, often at a shop somewhere, and, and so people can try, try things out. And I think it's, it's a question, looking for alternative uses, diversifying, you know, I mean, we're like in, in, along Golden Road, there's a chiropractor just opened, and that's quite a different, um, business from all the tech, all the tech ways that are around there and the sort of convenience stores. And hopefully, people can feel more confident about bringing some of those services which aren't naturally in, in the high street. But they need to be because they need to be in people's face and people need to drop in and think, I've got a problem on my back. Well, why not go to a chiropractor rather than waiting to see a doctor? You know, that sort of thing. So I think there are not changes, but I think it's, um, it's, it's questioned again, working with partners. And, and also the, the opportunity that the tourist examination centre might bring. We don't have tourist strategy, hopefully that would be part of the new economic strategy. Because again, it's, it's, it's helping people in to do different things in the city and, uh, it doesn't matter whether they come from D R or, um, D N, you know, it's, it's what we've got here, the offer we've got for them. And, um, it's just an answer, selling Norwich a bit when you do. And it's interesting because I was thinking about House of Prater, um, that, that would be a win. But I think so, like, not, not quite in the same form, but, you know, sometimes there are, you know, sort of good stories about some of these businesses coming back. And, um, yeah, you've got to try on the different avenues.
I think you're really going to see any time.
Lots of.
And as I'm correcting, the economic strategy, so, yeah, probably is likely and proactive system, please. And perhaps if we can, uh, share these, of course, more practically with the, um, start conversations, might be good. Any last questions on this or the draw up your pace? Um, I think the recommendations was, they call, you know, the funding and the identification, if, uh, all the things that we've done. Everyone's, so I'd like for that. Um, thank you very much for the call. And, and I'll bring my teacher to the place.